It is Monday, March 11th at 6 o'clock. Let's start out the Pledge of Allegiance and I believe Pastor Terry Martenson got tied up, so he's not going to be here, so we'll just go right into the meeting after the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, Susan?
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the wall at the entrance of the chambers. Number five, we've got approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims, and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Shannon, seconded by Burns. Please vote. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. Is there any items that one of the council members would like to remove? Mr. Shannon?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would remove item five B one. I would remove item five B four. I would remove item seven B. And I would remove item fifteen, hotel.
Seven B was removed from the consent beforehand, but...
Yeah, we just made it official.
Okay. You okay there? Bree?
Yes.
And then fifteen, what was the other?
Fifteen, hotel.
So we have a motion to...
No, they just come off.
Okay. So we don't need to... Any others?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by... Sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stinson. Please vote.
Discussion? Nope, sorry.
Councilman Stinson seconded?
He did.
I believe.
Stinson seconded?
Yes. I just had a question.
Okay.
Just a question. I think you said fifteen H?
Yes, sir.
Is that the one on the lights?
No.
No.
Fifteen F?
It's the ninth extension on the farming contract.
Oh.
Are we going to be talking about this at a later time, that you're removing them?
Yes.
Right. So you didn't remove the streetlights?
No, and they don't get removed from the agenda. They get removed to their place in the meeting.
Right.
Yes.
But you didn't take that one out of...
No. Would you like to?
Yes.
Okay.
Which one is that?
Can I add that? Well, I just did it. I think we should have some discussion on that one.
Which number is that?
That would... I believe it's fifteen F.
We did that.
Oh, it's already removed, but this way it'll be official, too.
All right. So F is not on the...
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda. Oh, at some point.
On the original agenda it was, but it's been removed, so this gives clarity, so it is...
Okay. So F has been removed if anybody believes it's on the consent. Any other items? First and second, we have... We can vote now, I guess.
Yep.
All voted yes.
Okay, so that should move us down to seven B?
No, five B one.
Okay, sorry. Yep, five B one. Okay. Approval of the minutes from the February 26, 2019 city council meeting.
Okay. I'll talk to that mayor. On the minutes, I asked Susan to amend the library discussion to include the motion and the vote that was taken on that item. This was not in our packets, so everyone has a copy of the change, and it now reflects that we had the motion and the vote in here in the minutes. So I would move to approve the minutes as amended and hand it out to everyone.
Do we have a second?
On the library, yes. Yeah, we did. No, we approved her recommendation.
So a second for discussion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you. Okay.
My recollection was, the decision was made by the mayor not to vote on it. He just read it into the record what that recommendation was, and we did not vote on it.
Susan?
There was a first and a second out there.
Was it voted on?
I think so.
Well, you went back and watched the tape, right?
I watched the... Yeah, where the motion was made and the second.
Was there a vote on it?
I didn't watch it that far in.
Okay. I don't remember there being a vote on it.
I don't either.
I remember the mayor rereading it as revised, and then we moved on and no vote was required. Was my recollection of that.
So there was just a motion and then the second.
That's how I recall. We had the motion.
And we didn't vote.
I don't remember a vote on that issue.
My recollection now, she's saying that.
Okay.
Mayor, I recall you saying, "We're not going to vote," but you read the recommendation into the record.
Correct.
There was no vote. So now, how do we...
And that's how I had it written the first time.
You had it written without a vote the first time?
But you also had it without the...
Motion.
Motion, right.
I did not have the motion in the minutes.
Right.
But I had it as the mayor stating whatever the motion was that Bree had written.
I'll defer to Bree. How do you want to fix it?
I think what we need to do is have a motion for the amended minutes, striking out the last part where it says, "And ask for a vote on the motion on the floor," and then the full last two sentences. So I think if we have a motion for the amended minutes as amended, that should cure it.
All right. I'll make the motion.
Let me talk to you tomorrow.
I'll make the motion to amend the amended minutes, striking after a library feasibility study the words, "And ask for a vote on the motion on the floor," and strike, roll call, vote on the motion was as follows to the end of the paragraph.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Then we can vote to accept the amended minutes.
Do I have a motion to accept the amended minutes?
Yes. It's already on the floor.
Oh, we're going back to that one. Okay. Motion was... Motion from Shannon, seconded by Welch, to accept the amended minutes, please vote.
Second.
Shannon and...
I don't have a voteee. There it is.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Move on to five B four. Acknowledge receipt of the Complete Streets Annual Report.
I would make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Complete Streets Annual Report.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Any questions?
Yes. I pulled this one just for discussion. Jeff, in the future, since we've amended the Complete Streets ordinance to require that we be provided with dollar values and things like this, are we going to see the costs associated with the various projects totaled into the annual report and a total expenditure? That way the citizens can see exactly how much Complete Streets is costing us.
Yeah, we can throw that in there.
Okay. And then, I know we just amended the minutes or the, you know, Complete Streets ordinance here recently, so you guys wouldn't have numbers collected for this year, so I'm not going to ask you to go back and do that because we'd just be taking a wag at it, but planning for next year, I would like to see dollar amounts in this report when it's presented to the council next year, so I just wanted to put that down as a marker.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that those numbers can be used, as numbers can be, and be very misleading. For instance, these construction projects have to put in handicap accessible ramps, or not necessarily ramps, but the curb cuts at the end of the curb, well, that's federal, but it's also Complete Streets. So we would have to do it in either case, and many of these other things that provide a Complete Streets would also have to be done. So how those are going to be broken out and listed, I have no idea, because that's not going to be easy to separate what's only something totally outside of what would be done as a requirement for other things. But getting numbers is not a problem, but how they're interpreted, and if somebody's going to use this to say, "We shouldn't be doing Complete Streets because this is how much it's costing us," you won't have good figures. You just won't be able to come up with that kind of a number that you're looking for. On that, the last thing I would just like to comment on, and I'm glad that we have it pulled so we can do that, but if you have read the March 1st edition of the World Herald, there's an editorial in there that says that the U.S. pedestrian deaths have hit the highest number since 1990. Pedestrians are out there and bicyclists are out there. We're not encouraging or discouraging, but we want to make the streets safer for them. And we're going the wrong direction, so Complete Streets at least allows for timing signals that are good and set so that elderly can get across streets. They're set so we have lanes for bicyclists who choose to ride, so that we have some signals and some things that make it safer for them. We've had at least one bicyclist within the city limits of Bellevue killed on a bicycle. We don't want anybody killed. We don't want anybody injured. Complete Streets is designed to plan in advance the best planning and the best implementation to save lives, to save property, and to move traffic efficiently. So I think that it's doing that. I think it's cost-effective. It does not put every single thing on every single street. We don't have bike lanes on all streets. We don't even have sidewalks on all streets, unfortunately. So we're trying to catch up and get the sidewalks so kids can move safely, pedestrians can move safely, and that's really the essence of what Complete Streets is about, good planning and safety. So thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Item seven, organizational matters. Seven B, approval of budget task force for 2019, 2020. City Councilman Paul Cook, City Councilman Thomas Burns, City Councilman Don Preister, Finance Director Rich Severson, City Administrator Jim Risto, Public Works Director Jeff Roberts, Fire Chief Perry Guido, and Police Chief Mark Albert, brought by City Council President Paul Cook.
You want to make the motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve. Item seven B.
Second. Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Any questions?
Yes. We have a standing budget committee appointed by the mayor, and Mr. Preister's on it, Mr. Cook's on it, I'm on it. A task force would be inferior to the committee. The only thing the task force could do is investigate and make a report back to the city council. So if that's the intent, that's fine, but it seems redundant and unnecessary, and we're going to waste a lot of staff time sitting in meetings, talking about things when nothing can be decided, and it's just going to be brought back to the real committee anyway. So I guess I'm not sure what's going on here. Mr. Cook did not talk to all the council members about this, so I'm not sure what exactly the purpose of a task force to report to a committee is. So that confuses me. And I really think that if we're going to do things like this, that, you know, all the council members should be consulted and, you know, know what's going on before we get here in front of the cameras.
Well, I'll respond to that. I'm not sure what the budget committee is. Last year, Councilman President... Council President Muldry put together a task force last year that included myself, Mr. Shannon, and Mr. Preister, along with the other same people that are mentioned in this task force. The purpose of a task force is to basically look at an issue, have a starting date and an ending date. So last year's budget task force had a starting date and ended after we approved the budget. We briefly talked about this at our strategic planning day. I did receive an email from Councilmember Thomas Burns, who requested to be on the budget task force, because I mentioned at our strategic planning meeting that I would put together the paperwork for one for this year. I talked to Mr. Preister, I talked to Mr. Risto, and explained to him that I thought our two new council members would need to, first of all, go through a budget process. Will all council members go through? This would be their first one, so I felt that having the two new council members on there would not be appropriate. I wanted council members that have gone through it before, and I did not include Mr. Shannon for reasons, and Mr. Burns had asked to be on it, so I placed him on it, and here we are today.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate being recognized as I raise my hand. I won't speak on my own until so, so thank you for that. I would concur with what Councilman Cook said. I would just ask legal counsel, because I believe we did disband the task force at the end of the year, so we really have no committee, we have no task force at this point, and it would be up to either the mayor to appoint or the council president to recreate it. And so I believe that that is the case of what Councilman President of the Council, Cook, is suggesting to do. So I think it's appropriate. I don't think we have a commission or a committee for it at all, so there is nothing else. There is no other authority, from my view. And the other thing that I would add that Councilman Cook mentioned is, we also discussed that the new council members really need some experience in the future on these task forces, especially the budget, and it's too early, as he said, but that we need to get more experience. And so when Councilman Burns asked to be on it, we just... Another set of eyes, a new set of eyes, and I think that is important. But the question I ask, I don't think we have anything right now, so it's a moot point to say this is going to have to go back to a committee.
We have an ordinance on committees, don't we?
I was not able to find a committee that formed a budget task force, but pursuant to Policy 16, any council member or the mayor can ask to create a task force, which is what Councilman Cook has done here with the approval of the council. They would then make the report after their investigation and present it back to the council, not the committee. So they would present that back here...
To the full council.
To the full council.
Right.
For that approbation, similar to the library task force. They would do the same thing. So I was not able to find a committee that is currently in existence. It doesn't mean that there's not one out there, but I was not able to find it. But we would certainly have the report back to the council at that point.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. And this was not anything negative towards council members Welch and Stinson. It was simply a discussion that they had not yet gone through the budget process. This one, that we will complete later this year, will be their first. And I did talk to Mr. Shannon at a council meeting, after or before, and I did explain to him that I was going to move forward putting this together, and at that point, I was not going to have him on this committee, on this task force.
That did not happen.
Yes, it did.
Okay. The only accountant on the council, the most experienced person here, I've handled multi-billion dollar budgets. You told me you don't even understand the numbers, like I do, and you want to cut me out of the budget process. That's really helpful to the city, Paul.
I'd like to call a question. Excuse me? Call the question.
I spoke.
Please vote.
Vote is five to one with Mr. Shannon voting no.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to eight, special presentations. Eight A, proclamation declaring Bellevue a gigabyte city powered by Cox. I think you're going to come forward and actually introduce yourself at the microphone, if you would, please, so everybody knows.
Good evening. My name is Callie Height, and I am the Public Affairs Leader for Cox Communications in Bellevue and Omaha and Council Bluffs in the greater Omaha area. I've got a couple of other team members with us in the audience to celebrate today, and then I'll let Jen Ray... You can introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jen Ray Wong, and I'm our Government and Regulatory Affairs Specialist for Nebraska and Iowa. We're pleased to be here tonight. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, I think we saw many of you as you were arriving. We wanted to make this a little bit celebratory because this is a very exciting milestone. We hope that it means a lot to you and your residents, and we wanted to celebrate that tonight. So we're very glad to be here, and we are fortunate to be part of the Bellevue community and feel very grateful to be able to do business here. So in late fall of 2018, Cox Communications reached a major milestone that really does benefit all residents of Bellevue. 100% of Cox customers here in Bellevue now have access to gigabit internet speeds, so as I've recently learned, a gig is 1,000 megabytes, and that gives you the ability to download a whole collection of songs in a matter of minutes, and download a two-hour movie within one minute. So it's a great deal of connectivity for individuals, for entertainment purposes, for connectivity, maybe for folks who are working from home, and so it's really the next generation of what citizens in the community of Bellevue need. And of note, of course, businesses have had access to these speeds for quite some time, so this milestone is relevant especially to individuals in their homes. You're welcome.
I'll present the proclamation. I have proclamation here. Whereas access to broadband internet connections are needed to work, learn, and play in today's world, and whereas a connection to the internet is essential for homework and educational projects because more K through 12 educators now provide instruction with at least some online component, and whereas many companies only accept applications for employment online, and whereas there is an ever-increasing amount of entertainment opportunities like video streaming and gaming that require fast, reliable internet connections, and whereas connected homes, which include smart appliances, security, and climate control, are gaining popularity, and whereas reliable internet enables home health care and peace of mind to allow citizens to stay in their own homes longer, and whereas it is estimated by the year 2020, the average American household will contain 50 devices connected to the internet, and whereas fast and robust connections at home are needed to allow employers to attract employees as our area continues to grow, and whereas Cox has committed to invest billions of dollars across the country upgrading and modernizing its network to support customer needs now and in the future, and whereas Cox now has gigabyte, one gigabyte per second broadband speeds available to all customers in Bellevue, now therefore, I, Mayor Rusty Hyde, by the authority vested in the meat by the laws of Bellevue, do hereby proclaim that Bellevue is a gigabyte city powered by Cox.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. That's a lot of language. I told him a lawyer brought it, but we tried to make it easier for him to read.
I feel like I should have a camera.
And we actually have a plaque to provide to you as well, which has a slimmed-down version, so even easier to read. Thank you.
We'll find a place for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Could I have you ladies, please, sign in?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, goodness, yes. Thank you. And if I didn't already mention, there's several dozen cupcakes out there, so there's going to be a lot for the staff to eat tomorrow if you guys don't pick them up on the way out.
Probably all be gone.
Consider it done.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your partnership in Bellevue.
Thank you.
So that moves us to eight B, which there is none. Nine, liquor licenses. Nine A, application for a special designated liquor license for B&amp;B Classic Dogs to be able to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during the Celtic Festival at Hayworth Park, 2502 Payne Drive, on Saturday, April 6, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., alternate site being Banner Park.
I'll make a motion that we approve special designated liquor license for B&amp;B Classic Dogs to be able to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during the Celtic Festival at Hayworth Park, 2502 Payne Drive, on Saturday, April 6, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., alternate site Banner Park.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch. Any questions?
You guys can function just fine to me.
Stop it.
Please vote.
Aren't we going to have a public hearing?
Oh. Public... Is the applicant here?
The applicant, and yeah.
Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor or against the liquor license? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, we can vote.
Oh, please vote. First, motion by Stinson, seconded by Welch, so please vote. Thank you. Nine B, manager application. Mr. Benad Hadka as manager of the Class D liquor license held by Blessings of Santoshi M.A. Inc., doing business as Select Mart, located at 4741 Giles Road. Is the applicant here? Okay, open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against the application? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the manager application of Benad Hadka as manager of the Class D liquor license held by Blessings of Santasha M.A. Inc., doing business as Select Mart, located at 4741 Giles Road.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping that the applicant would be here as the new manager, because we've had some problems at that location.
because we've had some problems at that location with students from the high school and some things going on in the neighborhood and I was going to get some commitments. So I guess I will do that outside of the meeting tonight since he's not here. I think it would be in the interest of the neighborhood to do that. And unless, is there a need to do this immediately?
I don't think so. He just sent in his application and...
And he's working there now, so he doesn't have to be the manager to still work there.
Yes, he's been there. You know, from the get-go, so.
I, I would feel more comfortable carrying it to the next meeting because it shouldn't interfere with the business. But at the same time, uh, we can get some idea of how they will deal with sales of tobacco to minors and some of the loitering and other problems that are in the area.
I'll make that motion that we carry this on to the next meeting.
Hold on, you got one motion on the floor. Will you withdraw?
Only question I would have, is it just where we want to talk to the manager specifically about the liquor license or other activities around the business?
I, I think they're related to both.
All right. I mean, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Then I'll make my motion that we carry it to our next meeting, which is scheduled for March twenty-fifth.
I'll second that.
And bring it back up at that point, giving us time to chat with the owner and, and asking him to come into the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, the first motion was withdrawn, the second motion to table it until our next meeting.
Welch, Shannon.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon to table it until March, what was the date?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Any questions? Please vote.
This says approval to recommend the application.
I just wrote tabled at the end and I will adjust the wording, so.
Thank you.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item ten, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Ten A, ordinance number three-nine-three-three, rezoning the north half of the east thirty-five point two feet of Lot Two and the north half of Lot Three, Tiller's Hillcrest Edition from BG and BGH to RS eighty-four. Applicant BJ Justice, location two-ten Galvin Road North.
I'll make a motion that we approve item ten A. Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Any questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item ten B, ordinance number three-nine-three-four, annexing tax lot A two B, E, E one, E two, H one, J, K, and parts of tax lots one, D one, and D two lying west of a banned railroad right-of-way, section twenty-one, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska, applicants Jose and Monica Ramirez, location two-eight-zero-three Childs Road West.
This item was pulled.
That, okay. That, that item has been pulled by the applicant. Item ten C, ordinance number three-nine-three-five, rezoning lots one and two Rancho La Estrella from RS seventy-two to AG and RS seventy-two for the purpose of agricultural and residential uses. Applicants Jose and Monica Ramirez, location two-eight-zero-three Childs Road West. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to approve ordinance thirty-nine thirty-five.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook. Any discussion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just mention the, the public brought some issues and some council members rightfully raised some issues. And we did check with legal and whether it's fencing or numbers of cattle or all of the other things. Uh, there are state and other laws that apply. So I believe we're in very good shape with this and it's certainly worthy of passing in with that oversight.
Anyone else? Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook. Please vote.
Five voting yes, one voting no, uh, by Bob Stinson.
Thank you. Item ten D. Ordinance number three-nine-three-six, annexing sanitary improvement district one-four-seven Blackhawk consisting of lots one through ninety-seven and lots one oh one through one fifty-two. Blackhawk, Lot One, Whitfield's Blackhawk, and Lot Two, Oakhurst Replat, Oak, Oakhurst Replat One, applicant city of Bellevue.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number three-nine-three-six, bringing Bell, Blackhawk into the city of Bellevue.
I'll second that. Long overdue.
Okay, a motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon and, uh, Chris Uchuck has some, something to add to this.
Thank you, Mayor. Section sixteen dash one thirty of the state statutes of section six requires a notification be sent out to public utilities at least fourteen days prior to the public hearing of the planning commission on this annexation. Uh, subsection seven of that section requires that prior to the final adoption of the ordinance, the minutes of the city council meeting in which such final adoption was considered shall reflect formal compliance with the provisions of subsection six. I am just confirming that we did comply with the requirements for that notification.
Okay, thank you. Question for Councilman Cook?
So when's the effective day?
Effective date, Chris, is?
It, it was written to be effective so they actually come into the city.
Is that June first?
Yeah, I'm... I think we did that June first for when they would actually be in the city.
Okay, June first. Any further questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Moving to ten D one, approval of the Blackhawk Park Maintenance Agreement with Blackhawk Homeowners Association and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll make a motion to approve item ten D one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, ordinances, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, there are none this time. Item twelve, ordinances for introduction, first reading, ordinance number three-nine-three-seven, amend Bellevue City Code, section two dash thirty, pertaining to city council's order of business to allow for accurate and informational quarterly budget presentation. Any discussion on that or?
Yeah, first reading.
Item twelve B, ordinance number three-nine-three-eight, authorizing and providing for issuance of public safety department tax anticipation refunding bonds, series two thousand nineteen, in an amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Five million.
Yeah, that's a little off. Correct that number. Five million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And staff is requesting waiving the statutory three readings, holding a public hearing, and voting at this time. I'll have Rich come forward.
Rich Severson, Finance Director. I have the bond counsel here and our underwriter representative from DA Davidson. If anyone has, uh, questions, uh, this is one of the refundings that we're putting in front of you tonight that's, uh, going to save us a significant amount of interest. Rates and, uh, terms ha- have, uh, become, uh... Have gotten to the right point where we think we can save a significant amount of money. And I think, uh, i- in your package, you can see that, uh, between the two of them, we're, we're looking at a million dollars of savings over the next several years. So I think that, uh, uh, you know, it's, it's in the city's best interest to go ahead and refund the existing bonds and issue new bonds at a lower interest rate. And, uh, if you have some questions on the waiving the other two, uh, readings and, uh, you'll still open it up for a public hearing tonight, so people can notice and they can come. But, uh, we need to get these bonds out there and get them priced. And I think, uh, Cody, do you have anything that you would need to add as far as, uh, um, talking about, uh, support for waiving those other readings? I know it's, it's, it's been routine for us in the past when we just had a refunding. This is not issuance of bonds for some underlying expenditures that we've just had where you get a, uh, make the decision, yes or no, do we want to add to our debt? This is existing debt that we found better interest rates and, uh, so.
Yeah, thank you, Rich. Uh, Cody Wickham with DA Davidson, bond underwriting firm out of Omaha. Um, I, I don't know if I have too much to add with respect to waiving of the three reading rule other than, um, it allows our firm the ability to go out to market as soon as possible. Uh, the timing that we've talked about with our trading desk would be, uh, go for, go out with, uh, the, the taxable redevelopment bonds, which is actually later on the agenda this week. Um, and then these public safety tax anticipation bonds, we would hit the market as soon as early next week. The only reason for the delay on this one is, uh, a little different than bond issues that you all have done in the past. We've actually, uh, gone out and to, uh, uh, apply for a, a bond rating through Standard and Poor's. Um, and we're waiting for the results of that, of that ratings call that we held last week. And we anticipate to have that, uh, result, the, the, the rating from S and P by the end of this week or early next week. Just kind of allows everything to kind of keep moving forward. I do have some more details on the transaction if you'd like to hear. Uh, it's good news, so.
You bet.
Uh, when we were going through the, the ratings call, we knew this, the bonds that we've done in the past is non-rated. Uh, you know, the city's had a, uh, an outstanding reputation in the bond market. Uh, we've gone non-rated. The local banks have been heavy participants in previous sales. Uh, but again, this, because of the size of these public safety tax anticipation refunding, we thought it would open up a broader audience. Uh, we feel very strongly that you would get a, a good investment-grade rating. So this is the reason due to the size and, and the type of credit that we went out for the rating this time. Um, I looked at some comparable cities either by size or just by neighboring communities just to give you an idea of, of how well you all have managed your debt over the years. Um, I'll just read a few of these. City of Omaha, their debt-to-valuation ratio is a one point three-five percent. Uh, Carney, debt-to-valuation is a one point three-one. Papillion is at a six point two-two, La Vista's at a five point six-two, and Ralston's at a ten point zero-nine. Uh, you all are at a one point one-five, so you're the lowest of, of all those mentioned there. Uh, City of Lincoln does, um, is, is slightly lower as far as general obligation debt. They're at a zero point five-four percent, but they have hundreds of millions in, uh, electric system revenue bonds. So, um, not exactly apples to apples, but tax, tax back general obligation debt, you guys are, are, are low amongst a lot of your neighbors and peers. So we feel ver- again, we feel very strongly that you'll get a, a solid investment-grade rating. And, uh, with respect to the, to the ratings call itself, um, Mayor Heike and, and Jim and, and Rich just did an, an outstanding job. I've been on a lot of ratings calls and they were just very to the point, answering all the questions and, and talking about the growth and, uh, just the, the, the overall good direction that the city is headed. So I, I, I'm expecting good results, uh, later this week.
Nice.
The, the refunding, um, of the public safety itself, we're looking, we're refunding various maturities, uh, going from a, an average interest rate on the, on the refunded bonds of a three point four-four percent. And we're projecting to take that down to a true interest cost of two point seven zero. Uh, net savings after transactional costs and everything over the life of the bonds will save the city four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight. Now again, that number might fluctuate when we actually hit the market, uh, and hopefully it improves a little bit. But, um, that, that percentage relative to the bonds we're refunding is a present value savings percentage of four point nine-two percent. Uh, that's a, that's a litmus test that we use. It's set by the Government Finance Officers Association. They say if, if the, the present value savings percentage on a refunding is, is three percent or greater, that it's a really good transaction for the city or municipality, whoever it may be. And this one's at a four point nine-two percent. So it's a, it's definitely a good deal. It's, it's the right time to move forward with this refunding. And waiving that three-reading rule helps us, uh, move forward. And remember that PB savings percentage because, uh, the next one, when we talk later, it'll really be impressive.
Cody, how long are these bonds for now?
Uh, the various maturities, they, uh, the final maturity goes, uh, the refunded bonds is in twenty thirty-three. I believe we kept the same final. Uh, we're actually shortening it a little bit, um, to help kind of with budget and planning. Uh, Rich has asked that we, that we move the principal maturities to December fifteenth. It kind of helps, uh, with your cash flow situation. So it's moving up from the final being, I believe it was June fifteenth, twenty thirty-three. It'll now be December fifteenth of twenty thirty-two. So we're not, uh, aggressively shortening the public safety bonds. We're just swapping out high interest rates with low interest rates.
Kind of like, kind of like refinancing a house.
I'm sorry, yes.
Kind of like refinancing your house.
Very similar.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. The bond rating that you're seeking is for the city or it's for just this bond issue once?
Uh, the, the rating itself is, is looking at everything, all encompassing the city, the, the growth, the management, the debt ratios. Uh, but it is specific for this particular issue. So, um, if you were to do another issue of, of size or, um, of length that would, that would warrant obtaining a rating again, you do have to go back to the rating agencies. They charge a fee each time again. It's just issue-specific. But it will be public information and, and those folks that currently hold your bonds that are non-rated, if it comes back as very favorable rating, you know, it, it kind of applies to all as far as common sense. If they know that you're rated a, as a, an A or an A-plus on this particular issue, they know that that's generally what the city's creditworthiness is, is for. But as far as using it out in the open markets, you have to apply for it, uh, issue-specific.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Councilman, uh, Shannon, sorry.
Yeah, uh, which, which bond issue is it that we don't need as much authority as we're asking for? The second one?
Yeah, that's the development bonds.
Okay, okay.
That's for the resolution.
Okay.
So thanks, Cody, for your guidance on that. Great job. Any other questions?
His comments, I, I just don't want you to think that just because we're doing better than some of those other cities that you are compelled to, you know, go into debt anymore to, to get your ratio up to them, okay?
Rich, we know you're tighter than birch bark, so we're, we're happy that you've maintained a thumb on the budget.
Chief Guido's not here either.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we suspend the three readings and hold the public hearing and vote on this tonight so that, uh, bond counsel can get these items to the market ASAP while interest rates are favorable.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Okay, so this is...
We're okay. We're just voting.
Right. Alright, so this is a vote on waiving the three readings. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. So... What's the new guy do now?
Open the public hearing.
My understanding is, is that we have to have a motion to go to the third reading right now.
Well, we have to have a public hearing first. Really? You want to go to the public, to the third vote?
There has to be a motion to move it to the final passage and then you open it up for the public hearing. Is my understanding.
Alright.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon to go to the...
This is motion for final passage.
Correct.
To go to final passage.
Correct. And then we open it up for public hearing.
Yes.
We want to vote on that first?
No.
No.
Okay, so. All right, now I'm gonna open it up for public hearing. So is there anyone that wishes to speak against or for the bond reissuance? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Preister?
Just to comment that the good work of our finance department and and our new bond council in finding these things and then finding the ones when they're feasible and then bringing them to us. We often hear when people complain about the finance or any other department in in government, but we don't always recognize the people who do a good job. And I think managing our finances, we've just heard. And those of us that have been more deeply involved in our budget know that the city of Bellevue is financially well managed. And so I just want to compliment our staff. And this is another fine example of saving close to, total will be close to a million dollars. So that's real money and that's serious and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Preister. Anyone else? Please vote.
Who was the second on that?
Shannon. Motion by Welch.
All voted yes.
Item 13B, no, let's see, 13, 13A, Public Hearing on Matters Other Than Ordinances. This is a public hearing on event application for Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce for the Runway Run on Saturday, May 11th, 2019, from 6:00 AM to 9:30 AM. I'll open the public hearing this time.
Dwayne Safarik, Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. This event is May 11th and it's starting at the Lead Center and ending at the Lead Center. During the process of the run, we'll also enter onto base property at Offit. So we have police support at this point. We have the Offit support for security. In about two weeks, we'll start the meetings with all the entities involved to go over the procedures for entering the base and coming back off the base and back to the Lead Center. We expect about 150 runners. It's a 5K run. Hopefully bigger and better than what it was last year.
So if people do want to run or get involved in this event, they contact the chamber?
We'll be sending out an invite here in the next couple of days. We usually have a pretty good contingency of military involvement in this and that's a lot of support for them as well.
Okay, but if people want to get involved with it, they just go come to your website and they can.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
The chamber asked me to start the race and hand out the awards. I just want to make this public that he does not have to run.
We were planning on your participation, yes, sir.
Mayor, you do understand it's a 6:00 AM start, right? Okay.
We'll have we'll have some rolls there for you.
Perfect.
You can do the donut run.
Run and a roll.
Put an axle between two rolls and we'll get him there.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this application? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
You need a motion?
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the event application 13A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Please vote. Thank you. Item 13B, Public Hearing on the 2018 Action Plan. Substantial Amendment. Now, open the public hearing.
Let Abby come first.
Come up. Come on up, Abby. I'll put you in front of all the others.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just here if you guys have any questions about what we're doing with this substantial amendment to the action plan. I'm here to answer those questions.
Councilman Shannon?
Thanks. Susan, will you bring up page six of this item? All right, remember I'm the accountant on the council, so why are you leaving the 81 cents on this one?
We're not leaving. It's still in our line of credit. We still have the money just to make it easier with the accounting of it. We're just, it's still in our line of credit and we can still reallocate it out at one time.
Okay, but we're not gonna bring this one down to zero?
What?
We're not gonna bring this one down to zero?
This one, it it's actually probably never zero because as we, as projects move forward and we close projects and we unallocate money and we move money, this always usually has a balance. And actually, in, what is today, in 15 days, it will have another balance.
Okay.
So it's it's kind of our fluctuating account with HUD. That's our our headline of credit.
Okay, and the 125,000 we just took back tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
It will go into that line of credit for reallocation.
But you're putting that into the 2019 program, not the 2018 program that we're discussing tonight?
Correct. Because at the time, that contract had not expired, so we didn't have access to that money. And once it expired, there's a 30-day wait period and then that money goes back.
Okay. All right, no, that that was all I wanted clarification on.
Any other questions? For Abby? Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve 13B.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook. Any further questions? Please vote.
We double voting?
Do I vote on it twice because it came up twice?
Didn't?
Uh huh, on mine. Do you want me to vote on it again?
Just vote again, okay.
I evened it out. I voted yes and no.
All voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Item 14 Resolutions, 14A Resolution Number 2019-06, CDBG, 2018 Action Plan, Substantial Amendment. You want to talk, talk with, talk on that, Abby?
The resolution is just the official approval. We then sent into HUD to show that the council did approve the the moving of the money.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll move to approve 14A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. 14B Resolution Number 2019-07, Authorizing Reimbursement of Wastewater Project Cost with Bonds If Deemed Necessary in the Future.
Jeff and I work closely on this. He he's going to put the project together. And what we've decided in the past is whenever we have a significant project, a significant dollar amount, and this is going to be one, seven or or more, Jeff?
Almost 2 million.
2 million. We'd like to put in place the ability to bond these costs and reimburse ourselves at a later date. So we have to do that before we start expending the funds. We can't just do nothing and then go back and say, whoops, we need to to bond these later. This does not mean we will bond them. And in fact, we we don't have bonding these costs in the budget. What this is, is just trying to take a prudent step that if something would happen with the wastewater infrastructure and we would have a a large issue and we'd have a couple million dollar emergency that is unforeseen, we could go back and bond these costs so that we wouldn't get into cash flow issue.
With council approval, of course, at that point, yes. This just lays down a marker so that in the future, we could, if we had to, do this.
That's correct. You aren't voting to bond it. You're voting, we'd have to come back to you and get council approval.
Any questions, Jeff?
We do have this in the CIP and we set these projects up based on our sewer fee rates. So we do have the money to come in to pay for it. I just want to let council know that the money is available. Like Rich said, in case of an emergency, we want to be able to not use up our total reserve of a wastewater fund.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just underscore again, wise planning and management here because we have taken the fees from our sewer fees and put them into the wastewater fund so that we begin collecting those fees and then using that money to replace all the old infrastructure throughout Bellevue. And the Old Town area especially is some of the oldest infrastructure, some of the oldest sewer system. And rather than wait for it to break down as it has, we're going to be proactive. We're going to spend the money and replace the infrastructure and do it when we already have raised the money from the fees. So we don't have to pay interest and debt service on it. So once again, we have a good wastewater treatment manager who is setting this up in the Public Works Department under the direction of the Public Works Director and the Finance Director, all coordinated. And we're going to be saving money. This is just another tool in the event that those old systems start breaking down. And as Mr. Severson said, if we have an emergency, some of those sewer lines could be a million, 2 million or more. And then what do we do? So good planning, good preparation, putting the money aside, having it now. And I'm grateful that we've had the wisdom to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 2019-07. Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any further discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 14C Resolution 2019-08, Authorizing and Providing the Issuance of Taxable Redevelopment Refunding Bonds, Series 2019, in an Amount Not to Exceed $2,865,000.
What's the number?
Not to exceed that number is a good number.
Okay.
Again, I'm gonna let Cody explain this a little bit. But this is, this is another good number. We appreciate the accolades, however. All I do is I go out and seek good advice and then I get the heck out of the way. So thank you, but there's other people that do a lot of the heavy work. This one's gonna have some pretty good returns on it. We're gonna save some some money on this. And the question that I kind of thought that I would get from the audience would be, well, how come you don't do this sooner? Well, timing is everything and I think maybe, I don't know if you could talk to some of the new tax laws and interest rates and timing. And we were a little bit paralyzed with what to do with these underlying properties. We thought that maybe they were going to be sold quickly. And so we didn't want to go out and 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 mess with the loan if we were just gonna pay it out shortly. But it looks like that we've got a little bit of a of a time period here before we're gonna be selling the underlying properties. So we're gonna try to do the best thing that we can and make those as as cheap to hold until they are sold. So I'll let you talk.
You can mention that. Again, Cody Wickham with DA Davidson for the record. What I mumbled to Rich, sir, was do we want to make it clear for the audience which properties we're talking about? These are the World Baseball Village Bonds. And you all have kind of been figuring out what to do with that property. And in the meantime, the bonds that originally issued to finance that land are holding interest rates that go out to 2029. The interest rates range from a 4.2% out to a 7%. So we took a good look at this and thought, how can we save some money? And what we're gonna do is twofold, unlike the issue I was previously talking about, the public safety bonds, where we're just swapping out rates and keeping the final maturity the same. The idea behind this is let's make this much shorter term, take advantage of short-term rates. And then if you, with with a shorter call feature, and I'll explain what that means. But what we're looking at doing is shortening that final maturity from 2029 down to 2021. These are gonna be taxable bonds, unlike the other tax exempt issues, so the rates are a little bit higher. But again, compared to, you're gonna be going from a five-point or an average interest rate of 5.609 down to a 3.095. That present value savings percentage that I mentioned that we use as a litmus test, anything above 3% is a good deal. This one's at a 12.29%. And if we hit the market today, we'd be looking at total net savings after cost of issuance of $973,881. So coupled with the 4.26 from the other issue, we're actually looking closer to almost 1.4 million dollars in interest cost savings to the city. The one, I I would say potential risk that you have with this, with this particular issue is if if it does not sell, if the land does not sell by December 15th of 2021, you're gonna have to do something with it. We're essentially paying off a little bit of principal, but the bulk of this, I don't need that exact number, 2,365,000 is going to be a balloon payment that you that you'll have to do something with come December of 2021. If you don't sell it and and they're not paid off with cash, the backup plan would be to refinance and stretch these out for three more years. So we've kind of looked at a worst-case scenario. Instead of paying 2029 rates, we're gonna shorten it down to three. If we have to roll it one time and and take it to 2024, that essentially, you know, it gives you a full five-plus years to do something with that land. If you did have to roll it and we ran a hypothetical, again, worst-case scenario, come 2021, if rates were 100 basis points higher, so a full percent higher, and you had to refinance these in in 2021 at a four, at a 4.1%. The negative, the negative cost to stretch that out would be $302,720 in in added interest expense. But remember, you're gonna save 973 right now. So even if you do have to roll this come 2021, you're still gonna be ahead of the game over $650,000 in interest expense. So we we think it's a good deal. We have you protected. I I mentioned the call feature typically on typically bond, most bond issues in Nebraska, like the like the public safety ones we're doing, they have a five-year, they have a five-year call redemption feature in place, which means you can't prepay or refinance for a period of five years. It gives the investors a a period of time that they know they're gonna get guaranteed interest. And so a five-year call is typical for for most deals that are bank qualified especially. This one, we're gonna look at putting a short, shorter call feature in place. We're gonna make it a one-year call. So from the date that the dated data, when we close this bond issue, you'll only be locked in for one year. So if something were to happen with that land very quickly and you were to sell, you'd only, at the most exposure that you would have would be one year of interest payment and then you can redeem them with no penalty. So we're going shorter call, shorter final maturity. It's gonna save quite a bit in interest and and worst-case scenario, if we have to roll them, you're still gonna be significantly ahead.
Excellent. Very good.
Any questions for Cody? Okay, thank you, Cody.
Welcome.
How about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-08.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. If there's no discussion, please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item 15 Current Business, Approval of a Temporary Construction Easement Over Part of Lot 3 Paradise Park, More Particularly Described in Attachment A, For the Purpose of Constructing, Repairing, Operating, and Maintaining. more particularly described in attachment A for the purpose of constructing, repairing, operating, and maintaining the wastewater pipe or infrastructure up on the property. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item number fifteen A, second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any further discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, approval of the low responsive responsible bid from Swing Construction, Inc. Not to exceed two hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-nine cents, plus potential city initiated change orders of up to ten percent, which would be twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven point oh three for the C D B G paving improvements east of Chandler Hills Project and approve the mayor to sign.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item fifteen B, second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen C, approve the low responsive responsible bid from Swing Construction, Inc. Not to exceed one hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents, plus potential city initiated change orders of up to ten percent, which would be sixteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one point oh two for the two thousand nineteen concrete projects and authorize the mayor to sign. Got some Burns?
I move to approve item fifteen C, second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any further questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen D, approval of a project agreement with H O A Solutions for the Bellevue Lift Station Upgrades Phase Two and Three and authorize the mayor to sign the project agreement not to exceed a hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve fifteen B, D.
Second.
Second, uh, motion by Preister, seconded by Cook. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Alfred Benish and Company for the two thousand twenty overlay N D O T A C project, not to exceed sixty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to approve item fifteen E.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stinson. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item fifteen F, recommendation of the allocation of seventy-five thousand dollars from the community betterment funds to help kick, start the holiday lighting and beautification project. And we have a presentation here, I believe, for the council.
My name is Dave Compton, one one three West Twenty-second Avenue. At first, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to come in and give this presentation to you on a project that I think is gonna be a very wonderful thing for Bellevue. Um, my hope tonight is actually to educate you, I guess, on what we're doing. And I think during my presentation, it will probably answer a lot of your questions and stuff like that. Got a very short slideshow, um, followed by a couple videos that's about two or three minutes long. So you guys can see what we're about, what we're looking at doing. Um, and then after that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that may still be remaining that's out there right now. Um, first thing is, what is Light Up Bellevue? Um, I will tell you, I was not involved in this project when it was thought of. Um, it came about by a couple people talking on the phone that wanted to take and better the community of Bellevue, do something to, to take, you know, for, to better the city and bring people together and the community together. Um, them two people actually approached the mayor. And he says, you know, he says, well, you know, he says, let's see what you guys can come up with and what you can do. At that time, there was a committee that was formed. And this committee didn't meet until really right after the first of the year. Um, it was talked about before that. The committee actually is made up currently of uh, Bellevue Public School employees, residents, city officials, um, often air war, Air Force Base people, business people throughout the community. And there, there's about nine people on the committee. That's where everything kinda started at. Um, up, I got up there right now, uh, the names of the people that are currently on our committee right now. Um, I won't go through all of them, but as you can see, there are people from the Bellevue Schools, the Offutt Community, residents, business people, and of course, people from the city of Bellevue. The purpose of Light Up Bellevue basically is to bring something beautiful to our city that attracts people to take and come down. Um, something that the residents can be proud of, something that will attract people from other cities to take and come down. Basically, we've, we've selected three target areas for the first go-round of Light Up Bellevue. Um, I'm gonna explain all three of them and explain, I guess, why we chose them. Not that we wanna stop with these three, because what we'd like to end up doing in the future as this progresses is taking, move to other parts of the city and stuff like that. Um, actually, one of them would be off of Highway three seventy on that empty lot that sits down in front of the Lead Activity Center. Uh, we chose that spot basically because you can see the display coming in on Highway three seventy. A lot of people use the facility at the Lead Center. Um, with that, the Bellevue Schools have offered to pay to get power over to that lot for this attraction. And they will actually take care of the electrical bill for this attraction also. Um, one thing I do want you to keep in mind, Mr. Preister, you'll like this, everything is LED lights. Draw very little. I know it's right down your alley. So every place that we're going to will be LED lighting. Um, the second attraction actually would be going down through Old Town. And you know, we're the oldest city. Um, I think Old Town's gonna come back. The, the, basically what we'd end up doing there is we'd be lighting up all the decorative streetlights. Um, them streetlights haven't worked for about eight to ten years. And uh, we did take and switch all them streetlights and bypass the ballast and turn them into LEDs. Cause we needed to see what we were working with, what worked and what didn't. When I went down and was asked to take a look at them, we had twelve out of eighteen that were not working. Um, they haven't worked for years. We retrofitted all them to LED lights and now we're down to just four poles that don't work down there. Um, like I said, this has been something that's been for quite some time. If you drive down through Old Town, it's got a little bit different look with lighting going on. The four poles that do not work at this point in time are north on Mission Street. And we hope to possibly get some funds, cause I think, I believe there are probably underground problems, you know? And once you get them fixed, then they'll stay fixed. But our goal down there for the decorative lights would be to take and wrap all these poles. Um, they'd each have a, a separate driver for them. We can turn them poles, the, the lights that wrap around the poles, any color. Uh, you got Saint Patty's Day, you can turn them green. You got Valentine's Day, you can take and turn them red. Uh, Halloween, when they have the trick-or-treating down there, which is a huge event down there, you can take and turn them orange. Um, Christmas, we can turn them whatever color we'd like to take and turn them. Um, then I, I think it kinda spices up Old Town a little bit. The third one that we picked actually is Washington Park. And we chose Washington Park because I'm gonna guess it's probably ten years ago. We put in probably ten panels throughout Washington Park. And the power's there. And you know, I mean, it costs a lot of money to get electrical when you're doing underground work and everything, get these panels set up. I know Councilman Preister and them probably used a couple of them for the farmer's market down there. But besides that, they've all kinda sat there. They have not been used besides that really. Um, and that's why we chose Washington Park. And that, we are looking and, and we'll show you a clip of that hereafter bit. But with, with that, what we're looking at doing is having a automated by sound um, that plays songs and stuff that people can drive up to, turn your radio on. Um, that is very big this day and age. Um, we've got a couple people in the audience that sit on our board that actually have displays on their whole lot. And one of them lives in South Bellevue, the other one lives in Papillion. And me and my fiance, we went down to take and try and look at his license. We couldn't even get through. We couldn't even get there. The, I mean, there's buses that come through, there's people that come through. And to my knowledge, I don't think there'd been a lot of complaints at all. Um, but you know, that's, that's pretty amazing in, in, in Old Town Bellevue, down in the city and stuff like that. Uh, our goal, like I said, is to take and bring people in here. If you look at it, actually, there, there's tens of thousands of people that go to Gene Lahey Mall every year. You know, they're done for four years. Um, you know, they're gonna be under renovation down there. They won't have lights. If you've ever driven through the city of Papillion, they've done a wonderful job, very beautiful there. We want to do something different that somebody else didn't have. And I think with the people that we have on the committee and stuff like that, it'll be a very good project to take and move forward. Uh, like I said, future attractions, someday we'd like to fill up Washington Park. We're just doing one quadrant right now. Um, our goal is to look maybe next year in the future for businesses down at Hayworth Park. Um, this has been done in Davenport, Iowa and some other places where businesses sponsor a campsite. And you can take and drive through there and you see different deals, you know, different displays throughout the whole campground and stuff. Hayworth Park sits pretty idle in the wintertime and just be a beautiful trail from Old Town right down into there. And we wanna seek other ventures throughout our city. Um, these were just the three starting points. Uh, we wanna take and, and you know, it might be Fort Crook Road next year. It might be Twin Creek. And you know, when that happens, the committee will, will certainly help anybody that wants to take and, and, and be a part of this project. Fundraising efforts have begun. Um, it's been a very short time. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass you guys out real quick.
Yep, just give them to me. I'll pass them down.
These are, these are flyers that actually we just picked up today. Um, as I said, we're looking at fundraising. We, we had a very, very short window. We really wanted to take and go public with the Bellevue leader. Um, our spokesman Eugene couldn't hook up right away. Eugene was down for a little while. And we, we wanted to actually get that out there first, but we've got such a short window to take and get our supplies ordered for this that we had to take and go ahead and move forward with our fundraising. Um, you know, tonight, I stand here, you know, and we're, we're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars um, to jumpstart this program. And the reason we're looking for that right now is if we don't get our order in, we can't do it this year. This committee wants to, you know, we, when we sat down and talked, we have to do this right the first time. If we don't, and we, we just do it half-majors, we're not gonna attract anybody. And so our committee is, you know, we want people to take and come down here and have a wow factor when they come down here to Bellevue. Um, we're not looking for the city to continue to fund this project. Uh, we have started the project actually with uh, the uh, Old Town Development Committee. They, they give us twenty-five hundred dollars actually to, to get our account set up and everything. Um, we are through the Midlands Community Foundation, which is a five oh one three C, so it's completely tax deductible. Uh, there's two ways to donate. Actually, you can donate either by the flyer and send in a check or you can go online and actually donate also. Right now, we're sitting at about sixteen thousand dollars that we've raised in probably about a week's time period. Um, a big chunk of that did come from the Bellevue Community Foundation, which was ten thousand dollars. The other twenty-five hundred, what I spoke of, and then the rest have been private donations. Our goal is actually to raise a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's a lot of money, but for what we wanna do, it's gonna cost a lot of money. Uh, we've had a lot of residents express interest on how, you know, how they can help, where can they donate? And I think as the word gets out and stuff like that, you'll see that stuff start filtering through pretty good. Um, one of your questions, I know, is probably gonna be, what's the city involvement in this? How much manpower is it gonna take, labor and everything? Um, you know, we would like some city help, but this project does not depend on whether we get city help or not. Um, we're looking at making this a community project where we've had offers from church groups that need communities, do community service, Boy Scouts, um, the Offutt Airmen out there, uh, high school kids. And we've got the people to take and put this package together. Um, and it's gonna take thousands of hours and it's something that we have to get started early. Uh, we would probably turn on, or I think we're looking at turning on the Lead Activity Center in Washington Park would be uh, the weekend of Thanksgiving, and it would run till after the first of the year. Old Town on the light poles is something that we would use all, I mean, we could use any time we wanted to take and had an event. We'd like to do a couple more displays, especially down on three seventy, to honor Offutt and stuff like that, you know, maybe for the Fourth of July. And there, there's just tons of things that we can do with this product. Um, we can turn up any, any color we want and we can make any display we want. I know we're gonna take and do a deal right in front of Detective's Area, the old Detective Building in Old Town for Saint Patty's Day. Um, you'll see the pole lights being green and there'll be a big tree there that's animated. And I know this year, we're kinda, we're, we're actually uh, honoring Jerry Sharbot. And actually, the names and stuff like that will go across this tree and look very beautiful. And that's stuff that we can take and do with it. Uh, as I said, the fundraising, I mean, I think, I think we're gonna have a lot of donations from people. Um, and you know, it don't make any difference whether it's five dollars, twenty dollars. We have business sponsors for a thousand, um, five hundred and I believe two hundred or a hundred. I'm not sure what's on that sheet, cause I just got them today. Uh, we've had four or five businesses already contact us that are gonna donate. I've already talked about a lot of this already, um, how people can donate and stuff. As I said, it's on the website there. And you can take and have a flyer and stuff to take and go on. We, we have a lot of fundraisers set up at this point in time too. Um, this year, we're gonna do, we've already got the location. And I don't know if anybody's ever seen it. We're doing for a fundraiser, a festival of trees. And it's where businesses actually donate trees worth X amount of dollars. You sell raffle tickets to the community. It's been very successful in other communities. And we've secured a place to have it from the Bellevue Public Schools. Um, we're gonna end up having other fundraisers that the committee's going on, I mean, that, that they're bringing together right at this point in time. And so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and have Phil, you got that ready to go?
Yeah, this, this is the website. You wanna talk about the website?
Do what? Actually, this, this is a picture of our website that we have up. I have not worked on this. Um, this is coming from other people on the committee and stuff like that. And at the bottom right-hand corner, it kinda shows our vision for Washington Park. Um, got two little slideshows to show you. They're not gonna last very long, cause I don't wanna take up a, I know you guys have had a busy, busy night tonight. But first one actually is, this, this is kinda what the tree's gonna look like actually for Saint Patty's Day. I have to have Phil up here, cause I'm not sure exactly how to run the computer. I have to have Phil up here because I'm not sure exactly how to run the computer. That will be the ten-foot tree that'll be on display for St. Patty's Day. And on the city property right outside the Detective's Building. And we just actually put that together to be honest with you. There are some people that want to do something down there because they can't paint the shamrock with the weather coven right now. It'll never dry. It'll wash down to Pat Shannon's place. They want to do something down there. And like I said, this is something that we came up with, you know, to this video here is what we visioned for Washington Park. And we're not going to, it's a three and a half minute video. We're not going to show the whole thing. We're just going to give you a little taste of what it looks like. Thanks Phil. So you can, that kind of gives you a vision, I guess, of what Light Up Bellevue is, what we look to accomplish to light up Bellevue. Um, as I said, you know, City Papillion, I mean, they, they take and actually they buy their lights, they hang them and stuff. We're not asking Bellevue to do all the work. We want help from Bellevue and we want help from our community. And I, I feel that we've got very, very good support from our community for just starting out. Um, I know even my, my commitment to this deal, um, might be a little bit more than what I thought it was going to be when I started, to be honest with you. I guess that's part of it for being an electrical contractor though, but, uh, my, my portion of it is, you know, my donation, I've told them that I would take and buy whatever, if you look at the deal in Washington Park, there's a whole lot of material that has to be bought. And that's my donation to this project. There's a lot of bases and stuff that need to be put in for stuff that need, structures that need to be built. I have the equipment to take and do that. That's my donation also, you know, to this project. So like I said, right now, where we stand at right now, we're asking for seventy-five thousand dollars to jumpstart it. Um, we have volunteers just waiting to jump in on this project and I think, I feel like it's a very, very, very good project. And I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Just a couple of things, Dave. Um, great presentation. Um, I think, uh, just so the people know, it is a synchronized light show. So it's not a static light show like you, like you find in, on some of the other, like Papillion has just those solid lights. But they actually set up an FM channel. So when you're driving by, you can actually listen to the music. It's all synchronized to that music. It, I, I'm sure it's going to draw a lot of, uh, a lot of attention to Bellevue. Um, other thing is, uh, Dave was kind of modest on his donation. That's, I mean, again, um, Dave's background in Bellevue, you've, uh, Dave's donated tens of thousands of dollars for, for this city over the years. And I, I know this is probably another ten to fifteen thousand dollar donation on your part and, you know, we appreciate that too. Um, so I, I just see it as a project that, that is going to put Bellevue on the map. It's going to show, people are going to start talking about it and saying, yeah, Bellevue's want that, that light show that, and they're going to drive down here. I think Mike Path, uh, in the back, he has a, a light show down on Thirty-Fourth Avenue. And, um, he's got charter buses and limousines and everything else driving by it. And it's nowhere near this size. So, uh, a great deal. Again, thanks for the presentation. Anybody, and I'll just open it up for questions from the rest of council. Councilman Shannon?
Um, as far as the future goes, you're showing us the first three sites. Okay. I guess one of the concerns, uh, as we look at something like this, everything we do sets a precedence. So, um, we, we start this with you. Somebody else wants to start doing something. They want money from us for this, that and the, okay. So on your website, is there anything you're showing for the future that years down the road, we're going to do something at Twin Creek? Or we're going to do something here, or we're going to, to, to allow people to see that this is going to expand. This is going to be the whole community. Uh, so that we don't have individual shopping centers all coming in going, we want our seventy-five thousand so we can do a display, you know? And that, that would help us, I think, if, if maybe there's a future tab, uh, on the website that, uh, you know, kind of shows the community, we're coming for you. You know, it's going to expand to you. We're going to get there. Uh, just a thought.
And, and Councilman Shannon, answer your question on that. I mean, and that's a very good question. We will have that on our website. We just got it set up. And you know, that's why I wanted to let everybody know what the three starting points were, you know, and why we chose them sites. Because it was, it was easy sites to pick, you know, where we had the power requirements there already for this. Um, but like I said, our goal, and I don't look for us to ever quit fundraising. Um, we will do different events every year. Because, you know, like I said, we're looking for the city's help just right off the bat. And then this thing needs to be self-supporting, um, financially. And I think we've got the people behind it because we've got, we've got people from different areas, you know, from the school, from the Offutt area, you know, business people and stuff like that. Uh, Bellevue, I mean, it's, we're fifty-some thousand, but we're still a very small community and we want to branch off. We would love to go down Fort Crook Road, you know, or Twin Creek and stuff like that. And we will most certainly let all them people know on our website and through other means that please come to us and we will help you do this, you know? Um, we have the knowledge. We have the, we have the people to take and help with it. And I'd like to see it all through Bellevue someday, you know? That, that would be our goal. But you, you have to start somewhere though.
Agreed. Now, is this a projection system and what, what is the approximate ballpark costs of these?
We're looking for this first go-round to raise a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. That's what it's going to cost.
Okay. And to do the projections and the, the music and all that at each location is about fifty?
Right.
Okay.
And then, you know, like I said, hopefully this thing goes to where, you know, I, I think a lot of it may take off too after people physically see this, this play, you know?
They get excited when they see it, right.
Because you hear a lot of people say, well, we're going to do this. We're going to do this, you know? And it never happens. Or it happens to where it's not that wow factor, you know? And, um, like I said, I've, I've been by Mr. Pass's house. Um, I haven't been by Mr. Baldwin's house, but I've been down there. And I mean, they got buses coming in and people going by in his neighborhood. And it's a very small neighborhood down there. And he's got a very, very impressive show. Um, you know, so I, I can only think of what would happen, you know, with Bellevue taking and doing it. And the people coming in to take, I mean, I get on a bus, we rent one every year and we go everywhere but Bellevue because there's nowhere to take and see stuff, you know? And we hit the restaurants or might stop and have a drink, you know, on that bus and spend money wherever we're at and stuff like that. And, but not only is it for that, it's for our residents here in Bellevue also, where some people can take their children. You know, or grandma and grandpa or whatever have you, and you can go as a family and look at Christmas lights and stuff like that. Um, power wise, I talked to Mr. Baldwin today and it don't add to his, and, and he's got a very beautiful display, his whole lot. And it didn't raise his bill, but no more than forty dollars a month of even that. So with the LED lights, they're very efficient. Um, Washington Park would run along with our ordinance, like from six to ten, you know, Monday through Friday or whatever it is, and then eleven o'clock or whatever have you. I have spoke with, uh, probably the closest neighbor there is, which is, uh, Tony and Vicky Vernon from Catfish Lake. They live right on the corner. And I said, what do you think about this? And he says, we would love to see something like this come to Bellevue. And I said, well, you know, there's going to be traffic and we're going to have music out there. And he says, we love it. And, you know, with Washington Park, it don't adjoin with a whole lot of houses there. I think there's four or five houses around that whole park. This is going to be, you know, out on Franklin Street, the first quadrant and everything. So really you don't have any homes that you're even going to be around. And, you know, as long as we stay, stay within the city ordinance, you know, with the music and everything else, I, I, I don't foresee no problems at all.
In addition, um, at, I was at one of the, uh, planning meetings and, um, Sarah was talking about the Festival of Trees that they did in her hometown. Sarah, how many people live in your hometown? About, they have about ninety thousand and they've been doing this Festival of Trees project for fifteen years. And last year they raised over two million dollars. So that's one of the things that Sarah is going to be implementing and the fundraising, part of the fundraising will go to this Light Up Bellevue. And we'll get way more information about that as it gets closer. So there's a lot of people working on this project to make this thing successful and to be, be very proud of Bellevue.
I think it's going to be a wonderful project when it gets done. Where is, uh, Rich? Because this is an unbudgeted item on our agenda here tonight.
Oh, he didn't leave. There he is.
Ah, yes. Let me direct my next question to Rich.
Stand close to him, Dave.
Yeah, hold, hold his spine for it. Yeah. Community betterment, that's always been our cash reserve. So, uh, seventy-five thousand unbudgeted. What do you say, sir?
Uh, if that's the wishes of the council, we do have seventy-five thousand. But remember that, uh, community betterment, it generates about seven hundred and fifty thousand a year right now. And, and, uh, if you're going to keep, continue to use that as a source for your economic development, then we, we, we're no longer really building anything for other community betterment, uh, projects. But if this is one that you want, uh, certainly there's, that we, we can find seventy-five thousand.
That's, you're talking seventy-five thousand a one-time fee. It's not annuals.
Correct.
Okay, okay. It's unbudgeted. We have to ask.
Thank you, sir. You're fine.
All right, thank you. Mr. Price.
Go ahead.
Councilman Stenson?
I just want to say, I've been following you guys on, uh, social media and everything. The interest in this has been outstanding. I can't believe the number of people that are interested in getting involved and just happy to see something coming to Bellevue. Uh, instead of driving out to Papillion and places like that to see their lights. So I just want to commend the group for, uh, what you've done so far.
Thank you.
It's a great effort.
It's Mike who started all of this because he started asking questions on Facebook and we just connected him with the right people to make it happen.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dave. That was a very good presentation and I appreciate everybody that's been working on this. It, it is good. You were correct. You did answer some of my questions and you started with the right one, the LED lights. So you got that. Uh, a, a second one was, as Councilman Shannon said, if we set the precedent and give seventy-five thousand for Old Town, then what do we do for all of the other areas and, and those developments? So you're working with them and doing it all together makes sense for the collaboration, the coordination. So that, that's the second one. Uh, I am curious, when you said there were approximately ten streetlights in Old Town that have not been working, those are actually streetlights?
Actually, there, there was twelve of them. There's a decorative pole lights.
It's the lamppost lights. Um, not streetlights, it's lamppost lights, the, the shorter ones.
Yeah, not, 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 not the big O P P D streetlights. These are your decorative lights that go down through there.
Okay, so they're, they're not the ones that the city is already paying for and that O P P D should be replacing. Because if you're putting new LED lights in, O P P D is now converted and they're starting to put LED lights on all streetlights through the whole metro area. And it wouldn't make sense for you to pay and do it when they can bring their equipment down and do it. If they're the streetlights that are part of that system.
These, these decorative streetlights, what I understand, and it's been a deal going back and forth on who was responsible, because I've been involved in it really for about ten years. Um, when they first asked us to go take a look at them. And, and like I said, these poles stand probably ten foot high and they got an acorn globe on top of them. And we've been trying to find a way to get them fixed, you know, for, like I said, eight to ten years. Um, the only way to do it was going to be directional boring and stuff like that. Because we, we thought there was more of them broke than what there really are. Um, but it's been determined that them are city streetlights and the city has to maintain them and repair them and stuff. Um, they're not your big tall regular streetlights. So there is a different light, you know? Um, my hope is, and I, this is a whole different deal and I don't know if this is the place to bring it up at, but you know, anything on the north side admission, from what I understand right now, is covered by CBG grant. And maybe some of them funds could go just to fix them four poles, you know, since we got some money being returned. Um, you know, it's, that way it's, it don't come out of the city budget, Councilman Price, you know? And we can get everything up and running. And that's not something I do because we don't do directional boring and stuff, you know? But I can most certainly advise on what needs to be done and stuff and help you guys out in that area.
Jeff, did you have any input on this?
No, I was just going to tell you those aren't O P P D poles, that those do belong to the city.
Okay, that, that was the distinction.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that.
Okay. I, I smile when I think of the children and the families and the people whose lives will light up like the lights do. And that makes me feel good. Uh, however, let me be the Grinch for a minute. We have taken close to three million dollars out of community betterment just in this last budget cycle. And we have taken community betterment money to balance the budget in prior election cycles. And if we continue to fund economic development at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as we just heard from our finance director, that wipes out the total income every year for those years, ten years that we funded. So we have no community betterment. We don't have another reserve. This was our reserve. And I, I'm not just talking to you, Dave. I'm, I'm talking to the public and the taxpayers right now because we've got a new budget cycle coming up and we can't balance the budget because we have no community betterment funds left. We use that when we want, instead of borrowing money, we take money out of that short-term to pay debts, to cover things like even rebuilding this building to save tax money. So we've managed very well and I guess I feel a little paternalistic about the budget and community betterment. We've exhausted it. We have no reserve. We even started creating a reserve. We used that money up. So I'm just saying to the public, we've done our, our diligence and we've done a very good job of managing finances. But if people want us to keep spending, then something's got to give. Either taxes have to go up or something's got to happen because we've hit the end of the rope. We have no more place to go and we do this. And I was concerned that we would then be doing it in Twin Creek. We'd be doing it at Fort Crook. And having set the precedent, where do we go from there? So you've allayed that fear. I'm going to side with the children and the smiley faces. But I'm the Grinch saying, folks, the bill's got to be paid and community betterment isn't there anymore for hardly anything else. So we just need to continue being good stewards as well as good Santa Clauses.
And, and actually, Councilman Price, I don't take it personal at all. I know that's your job to do what you need to do there. Um, keep in mind, this is a one-time deal that we're asking for. We're not looking for the city to fund it every year. And we are looking to move into different areas with, with funds that we raise in the community. And I've been in Bellevue for a long time and I've been involved with the city. And I don't think I've ever seen somebody come in front of the council with a group like what we have right now in the community itself, with the community involvement and ask for funds to better our community with what we're looking to provide to the community, if that makes any sense. And I know, Councilman Price, you've been on the council for a while. I don't think you know of anybody that's came in like that. It's, it's a different deal. It really is. Um, and like I said, it's, it's a one-time deal. Um, and, you know, a lot of it for this year, it, it does depend on the city jumping in.
So on that, a couple of things, um, I've heard, I've heard it said a couple of times here, um, what's going to keep other groups from coming forward and asking us for money? Um, I see this as a project that people are doing for Bellevue, for, for the community, doing our job. I, I keep referring, I, I don't like doing this. I want people to refer to us. But Papillion does a fabulous light show on their, in their downtown. Um, I've got a building there. They actually come hang all the lights. But Papillion does a fabulous light show on their, in their downtown. Um, I've got a building there. They actually come hang all the lights. They meter all the lights. They pay for the material, the, the electrical. So this is something the community's got buy-in on, and I, I really feel it's, we're getting something a lot more than what we're putting into it. Um, but it's gonna be good for Bellevue. And I'm gonna ask Rich to step forward, please. Um, he, he's a, he, he's watches our checkbook very closely, but our administration has, has, uh, brought some new ideas, and hopefully we got an answer for some of this funding, and at least it, it sounds good on paper, but.
I am cautiously optimistic with some of the ideas that we've discussed. And you started tonight with one of them. There's some, uh, ideas on annexation. Uh, there's some things that the administration and, uh, the mayor has pushed, and, uh, I think planning's right behind it. Uh, to, uh, to help us start generating some other funds, general funds, instead of going back to the, to the community betterment well. So I think that in the future, I want, again, I'm gonna be cautious, and it might take a year or two to, to ramp up, but, uh, uh, I'm hoping that we're in a much, much better place, uh, within a couple of years as far as general fund revenues that are available for operational expenses. Cuz I wanna be clear, uh, we have used community betterments, uh, funds in the past, but those have been projects. We've never used that to supplement our payroll or any of the operating expenses. They've been, uh, individual projects that have bettered the community, that have been voted on by the, by the council.
So you're cautiously optimistic and I'm optimistic, so.
Yes, and that's the way it has to be. Somebody's gotta watch you, Mayor.
Rich, I mean, even, even with some of the things you and I discussed today, uh, you know, there's several million in savings that we can come to in the budget. And, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna move forward with some of those. Uh, I'm, I'm already working on one of them for you, and, and, and I know some of the others are going forward. So there's several million in savings. I mean, we're starting to do things smarter, so I think there's good cause to be cautiously optimistic.
I am all over cost savings, because those are always real. The revenues may come, they go.
Despite all costs, we're gonna get the budget across the finish line in good shape.
As, as an accountant, I really like the cost saving. And between the two, uh, we're, we're gonna get there. But that's a, a broader picture to maybe make you feel a little bit better about this one time. And, and if I've heard it right, uh, I'm always in favor. If there's someone else putting skin in the game, uh, then I, I, I feel a lot better about putting some of the taxpayers' money in there, if there's others that feel so strongly about it that they will put their money in there also.
All right, thanks. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. That's just me, dude.
Did anybody else have any questions for me at all, or?
Did you, uh, bring something to show us, or the light over there?
Actually, they, they brought one with lights.
Is that what they're gonna put up?
This Rob Baldwin here, he's got the display in Papillion at his house. It's quite a display as well. But just to show you, that's a, it's just one bulb, and it can make any color there is out there. So they can change the colors.
And Rob, what did you say that, that the illumination on this one is? At what percentage did you?
Say what?
Isn't there a certain percentage that you can turn?
Yeah, I mean, this is actually being ran at, at thirty percent, right? So I mean, I, I have another seventy percent to go up.
Do we need to make Chris close his eye? Is this a digital sign?
But yeah, I mean, as you can see, I mean, everything.
Behind the podium, you can, podium, you can't see it.
I know.
You know, these are, these are actually the lights that we'll be using.
You're gonna speak in the microphone.
Huh?
You're on TV right now, so come speak over.
Talk into the microphone, please.
Uh, yeah, those, those are actually the lights that we will be using. Um, e- every individual light is an RGB a pixel, just like on a computer screen or a TV or whatever have you. I can, every single one of them can be, depending upon how bright I make each individual red or green or blue element, can be any color then. They mix inside the light and become that color.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions here, Dave? And I think, uh, the chamber, to answer your question on other areas, the chamber had the, uh, Christmas Wonderland down in Old Town. They moved that out to Twin Creek, and I think the businesses, if I heard this right, took off, and they're expanding their light show. Maybe Jim can talk to that, so.
Yeah, and what I understand is Twin Creek is still gonna be a player, not at this level, but the idea is, in the long run, is to merge those two together. But the chamber still has Twin Creek on the radar, and that's all with business support. So they're not asking the city for anything. And I think it's in the discussions, we've got a chamber rep that's here, but the discussions have been, at some point, this will all become one too. So, consolidate our efforts or their efforts. But Twin Creek's still on our radar for another event out there, cuz it's, it's a retail sector. It's a good draw.
I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me to come up and give the presentation to you. I was kind of the elective one. I kinda knew you guys anyway, so.
Did a good job.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, I just wanna salute everybody that's on it. You were right, Dave. This is a pretty complete package of people, more so than I, I have seen in the past. And what I like about it is it's for all of Bellevue, and we need to unify in more ways the whole community. North Bellevue is often feeling left out. The new developments to the south often feel left out. This can bring everybody together, and those lights can be in other places for that unification. So all of those things I feel very good about. I want to be optimistic, but all of the good things, and I salute the mayor and the administrator, they're proposing some very good things that I think can bring in some revenue. I don't think much of that's gonna happen in this very first year. So I'm still gonna be with the finance director and the finance department watching closely, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we approve item fifteen F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stenson. Any further discussion? Please vote. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate that as well.
Okay, so we'll move to fifteen H. Approve the ninth extension to the contract with Justin Toms for custom farming. Approximately sixty-one acres at Thirty-Sixth Street and Cape Hart Road in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. And the ninth extension to the contract with Justin Toms for custom farming, approximately sixty-two acres at the Bellevue Sports Complex in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. Waiving council policy, uh, four, requiring solicitation of bids for goods and services costing more than thirty thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll talk to this one. All right. So the reason this was pulled from the consent agenda is that we had to waive council policy four in order to approve it, and you can't do that on the con- consent agenda. So this was pulled so that procedurally we could approve this properly, okay? Um, this area, we've got two different parcels. We're working on farming right now. And previous council said that we couldn't just farm it, so we go out on contract to this Justin Toms, and we are paying him to farm it. We get the proceeds from it. Our revenues have been dwindling, so we, we used to bring in about fifty thousand a year. We're down to about forty thousand this year. Uh, soil analysis tells us that we need to add some nutrients and do some things, so we anticipate holding this at least two more years, so we're gonna spend an extra ten thousand this year. For some nutrients into the ground, go to corn instead of soybeans, and do some things to try to get the yield per acre up so that we can get our revenues back up around the fifty thousand dollar mark. But this is ground we're holding. We're just trying to do something with it. And, uh, keep it in good shape and keep it going. So, um, that's what this item is all about. Uh, you know, this year, we're, we're probably going to, uh, you know, maybe lose a little bit of money, but we're gonna put it into the ground so that in future years, the yields are greater and we make that up quickly. So I think this is a good project. Uh, I would make a motion to waive council policy four, which requires us to solicit bids. We did go out for bids on this. Nobody responded. Okay? Uh, that's why we just keep extending this contract. And with the two parcels together, we're exceeding the thirty thousand. We're up around forty-nine thousand. So we need to waive council policy four so that we can approve this.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to approve fifteen H as pre-
To waive policy.
To waive council policy four.
Oh, we're doing one.
One at a time.
So, motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to waive.
Council policy four.
Council policy four.
Correct.
Any questions? Please vote.
No. Now I'll make the motion to approve fifteen H.
Okay, second. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Cook, or Preister. I forgot where I mentioned here. Uh, to approve fifteen H. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, a que- question on what we just voted. After I pressed my button, it said that we were actually voting on the contract, I think, but no.
Yeah, the words were put in there, but I will take them out later.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that we're proceeding correctly. The, the other thing, uh, Councilman Shannon was right on with what he just described. I would add two reasons that we've lost money. One, commodity prices are down and you don't get much money, so that keeps going down, and like all farmers, you don't make much money when you don't control your own market and what you sell it for. The second thing is, we've sold off land, so we're farming less, and so we don't have as much land, and we get lower price. I think we're doing exceptionally well, and I think Justin Toms has done a great job over the years in farming it. I've visited with him. I've, I've gone out and questioned him, and my farm background is way outdated, but he's answered all my questions and done a great job, and we're fortunate, in the middle of town, to even have somebody with equipment who can even farm it for us. So this is a very good policy. It's a, a very good contract for the city, and I fully support it.
Any other comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Fifteen I. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent with First Development LLC to purchase and the option to purchase various city properties mentioned in the LOI for Old Town redevelopment.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item fifteen I.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. If, uh, item fifteen J. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign a two-year lease agreement with the Nebraska Department of Motor Vehicles effective March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen for approximately seventy-five thousand square feet of concrete parking at one forty-four oh two Harlan Lewis Road for daytime use for CDL licensing.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve fifteen J.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, sir. I would also make a motion to amend fifteen J and authorize the payment of leasing commissions along with this item. Uh, we're, we're renting a property. We're gonna get some income, but there are also bills to pay. So we're amending this to show that we're gonna pay the leasing commissions associated with the lease. So, uh, we, we need to give, uh, Rich that authorization along with approving the agreement. Can I get a second?
Further explain, I just.
Okay. In here, we're getting nine hundred a month, twenty-one thousand, six hundred overall, three percent commission, uh, commission due on this, so we have to pay six hundred and forty-eight dollars. So what's on our agenda is to approve and authorize you to sign the lease. We have to also authorize the payment of the commissions associated with the lease. So we're just amending this to authorize the payment of the bill with this.
I'll second that.
Okay, now there's discussion here. Does anybody have a discussion on that? Councilman Preister.
That sounds perfectly logical. I hadn't thought about that, and I, even if it weren't needed, if we do it, it hurts nothing, but it covers everything. So I think, good point. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, I guess I have a question. Um, so are we paying the, I thought I read this. Are we pa- I thought it was coming out of the monthly. I thought it was nine hundred dollars minus the three percent, so they're only getting paid for each payment they make. So if we ca- if we cancel a contract in four months, we're gonna pay the full commission on two years, so.
I'll let Bree comment.
I think that's correct, but I agree with Councilman Shannon that I think we still have to authorize the payment of those, whether it comes out of the lease payment or whether it comes out of a separate fund. Um, but you're also correct. If we're two months in, then we pay for the two months. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. It, it does, but I think, I think the contracts, the lease agreement said we're paying the three percent out of the monthly payment each month. That's the way I understood it, I guess, when I read it.
All right. I'm just covering our bases and authorizing both.
It, it says that the tenant's agent will receive from the landlord a real estate commission equal to three percent of the gross value of the lease. It doesn't specifically state that that would come out of.
Yeah, there's another spot in there. I read it, so.
I think to be on the safe side, the amendment to authorize the payment, whether it's coming out of the lease payment or whether it's coming out of a separate fund, just kinda covers the basis so that whatever option it is, you have the ability to do that.
Okay, so, uh, motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch to, uh.
Authorize payment.
Authorize payment for the commission. So we'll vote on that one. If there's no further question, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Now we'll, uh, we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to approve fifteen J.
Yes.
Any questions? Please vote.
Who was the motion in the second on this one?
Uh, Shannon and Preister. Preister was second.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen, administration reports. We'll accept those. Are there any questions or comments on those? Okay. Um, so what is it, eight oh eight, and we'll take a vote to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Burns to adjourn.
Aye.
Do we need?
Please vote. I didn't say that.
She's getting there.
I tried.
All voted yes.
Thank you.